Continue on with our agenda. Our next thing is two o'clock, Green Diamond Resource Company Timberland Purchase/Introduction, and Patty Ira, credit last name.
Case.
Patty Case.
Mm-hmm.
Would you please come up?
Absolutely. Happy to.
Keep it in for me.
But I'm not going to refer to it quite yet because I'm going to give you a little bit of background about our company and the purchase itself before we talk specifics. So for the record, my name is Patty Case and I'm Public Affairs Manager for Green Diamond Resource Company. And our company actually dates back to 1890 in Mason County, Washington, which is actually where I live. I wasn't there in 1890, I guarantee you that. At any rate, the company was originally founded by Saul Simpson in the heart of the Olympic Peninsula. And he, previous to starting his own company, worked for Captain William Renton of the Port Likely Company, the first one of us in Washington State. So at any rate, long, long history dating back five generations and even after five generations were still privately held. And both the President of the company, Douglas Reed, and the Chairman of the company, Colwin Mosley, are two different families, but both great-great-grandsons of Saul Simpson. So the company is not just privately held, but still actively managed by the family.
Mosley, is there any relation to Wade Mosley that's affiliated with Collins Company?
No, not that I know of.
Okay. Timber is just...
Yeah, yeah. It might be a small world, but I don't think it's quite that small. At any rate, so today we have 1.3 million acres in Washington, Oregon and California. So that includes 330,000 acres in Washington State, and that's all on the southern end of the Olympic Peninsula and down into southwestern Washington. And about 385,000 acres in redwood country in northern California. And then this tiny little parcel of 600,000 acres here in Oregon. So this is a bit of a new genre for us, being in the eastern part of the state and working with pine rather than Douglas fir, but clearly we've been in the industry for a long time. And I just want to outline a little bit about our stewardship ethic because I know people are really interested in that in this day and age. So both in Washington and in California, we have habitat conservation plans, which as you may know is an element of the Endangered Species Act that allows us to manage according to specific prescriptions agreed upon by ourselves as well as the services. In our case, it was National Marine Fisheries Service and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And then in exchange, we protect these endangered or threatened species and continue to operate on our landscape. So ours was actually the first company to have a habitat conservation plan in northern California for the spotted owl. And in fact, we have about 1,200 banded spotted owls in northern California living happily in second growth on our landscape.
You have barred owls?
Yes, in fact, we have a very robust research arm that I am not nearly as familiar with as Andy, but that one of the things we are doing in cooperation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services is eliminating, shall we say, barred owls. I don't know what the success rate is.
They call it scientific take.
There you go. So at any rate, that was the first HCP in northern California. About the moment we signed that HCP, the Marvelled Merrill that came up on the threatened list. So we have a second HCP that overlays the first one, and that one's largely aquatic, but also includes the Merrill. So here in, and then in Washington State, we have a habitat conservation plan signed in 2000, and that covers actually 51 aquatic and terrestrial species, most of which aren't listed at all, but might be the next thing listed. So the idea is to protect this habitat regardless of listing. And ours was also the first in the nation to have a nexus with the Clean Water Act. So there are some parameters around sediment and around temperature as well. So that, as I mentioned, was signed in 2000. All three of these are 50-year habitat conservation plans. And one of the things that I think is really unique about the Habitat Conservation Plan in Washington is that we have a scientific advisory team that meets a couple of times a year, reviews everything that we do, and looks at the science. I know, what a concept, right? Looks at the science behind what we're doing and makes suggestions, recommendations for adaptation going forward. Because we know science doesn't stay still in 50 years. Heck, you know, 30, 40 years, we were taking wood out of streams in order to conserve the fish habitat, and now we're putting it back in. So that's the kind of thing that we're interested in doing in order to really ensure long-term sustainability. I've mentioned we're privately owned. Our President will tell you that he's making decisions for his grandchildren, and he's not making that up. He doesn't even have grandchildren yet. So at any rate, a couple of other things. We have a set of core values, and I don't expect you to believe these until we demonstrate them. But our core values include integrity, of course, safety, which is absolutely number one on our landscape before we get out of the truck, before we leave the office, profitability, of course, we are a for-profit company, but with a long-term viewpoint. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Stewardship and community. And interestingly, our second-generation owner, Mark Reed, who was General Manager of the company and then married the boss's daughter to seal the deal, you know. Anyway, he was first Mayor of Shelton, Washington, and then became a member of the House of Representatives in Washington. He served seven terms and was Speaker of the House. He was a Republican, was asked several times to run for Governor and decided that his business and his family had to take precedence. But one of the things he fought for very hard was the very first workers' compensation legislation in Washington State. And really, it was all around injured workers. So those are the kinds of things that he stood for, and those are the kinds of things we still are involved with today. I could go on for hours, and you don't care, I'm sure. But we are involved in a really fascinating little project in Washington State called the Lager Safety Initiative. So our company actually has company loggers, and we do here in Oregon as well. The company loggers in Washington State are actually self-insured, but we employ a lot of contractors, and we will employ contractors here in Oregon as well. And we know that those folks... You're sitting down, right, all of you? So workers' costs for a manual lager, which is either a choker setter, or a chaser, or a cutter, workers' compensation costs in Washington State are $20.18 per work hour. And we saw that as sort of a major, well, two factors. One, it's a major deterrent in terms of owning a contracting business and employing these contractors. Secondly, it's a terrible incentive to cheat. And so we're working with the industry, with the Department of Labor and Industries, and with the contract loggers, to put together a very, very in-depth program that includes training for these folks because we discovered that most, say, 46% of the accidents occurred within the first six months. And I'm talking about catastrophic accidents at this point. So we put, we're putting, we have put together a very major training program and then a third-party audit program as well. And so we're all working together in order to just change that safety culture and make sure that we're just not, you know, employing contractors who in turn believe that a bunch of cowboys out there is okay. So at any rate, that's, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on some of the things that we've been involved in. So you see our little landscape here.
You have the per-hour rate for Oregon?
It's much lower. It's something like eight, but I'm not sure of that. And I'll explain. What happened in Washington is back in 2003, they split the manual lager from the mechanized lager. And so the manual lager, all of a sudden, that pool shrank considerably. And all of a sudden, these folks said, hmm, I'm not really interested in paying these increasing costs, so I'll become an owner-operator. And that's available under Washington, where I believe it is in Oregon. So quite a different landscape, and I'm not suggesting that workers' comp rates in Oregon are necessarily low.
They are not.
But workers' comp rates in Washington happen to be the highest in the nation, on average. Wham! So there are bigger problems than just our industry.
We pay a lot as a county for work.
Right, we must have a number of employees, right?
Yeah, we're around, right around a hundred. Our road department is naturally our highest. My struggle with workers' comp is when there's a legitimate call, somebody gets hurt on the job, and they drag it out so long. We pay that interest for a reason. If we say, it happened on the job, we've seen it, let's get those people healthy, let's get them back to work instead of dragging them out. But workers' comp in Oregon has a tendency to treat everybody as you're trying to take advantage of the system.
Oh, interesting.
And that's my concept. And I'm probably saying too much. But I just believe that if we, the Board of Commissioners, are paid for that insurance coverage, it should be the best it can be. Take care of our employees, right? Basically the same comp as if you have.
Absolutely agree. So as you can see, we spill a little bit over into Jackson County and a fair bit into Lake County. The bulk of our timberland is in Clamath County. This is almost all of JWTR's timberland excluding this portion right in here. And so over here in the west, we've got about a 20-20, 20-20, 20 mix of ponderosa pine and white fir, doug fir, incense cedar, and sugar pine. Up in here, we have a lot of lodgepole pine, a little bit of ponderosa pine, and then we've got a pine mix over here. But the landscape has been fairly heavily harvested over the last several years. So warehouses sold it to U.S. Timberlands, U.S. Timberlands sold it to JWTR. We purchased from JWTR. And the reason I went into such depth about our stewardship ethic is that the real concept around this landscape is Andy Elsby, our Operations General Manager here in Oregon, last Monday gave his foresters the direction to put together a sustainable plan for the next 15 to 20 years. The harvest level might be a bit lower than it has been, but what we're really trying to do is maintain a harvest level for the next 15 to 20 years that can help sustain the mills that we already sell to, including Collins here in Lakeview. And so we don't want to ramp up and then crash down. We want to maintain a very steady level. And then after 15 to 20 years, we'll be able to ramp up considerably because landscape will have recovered and so on.
And that sustainability plan is programmed county by county or just across the...
It's really block by block. So you could say it's county by county, but it's not really calibrated that way. Yeah. So one of the things, you'll see a couple of circles on that map, and really what we've been talking about a lot over the last week or so is the fire situation and fire protection here in southern Oregon. We're used to thinking about streams and, you know, threatened fish species, and we haven't really been engaged in the issues around forest management and fire and disease management, that sort of thing. But we're very interested in those issues. We did have a pretty major fire over here. We were, the Oregon Gulch Fire was about 30,000 acres in total, and about 17,000 of that was ours, about 15,000 of it was timberland. And we're right now salvaging that land in order to get this stuff to market before it deteriorates and is no good whatsoever. So the Oregon Gulch Fire, the way we understand it, JWTR still owned the land at that point. So we were in negotiation for purchase of the land starting in April, but the Oregon Gulch Fire, of course, happened in August. And what we understand happened was that the Forest Service had a man look out, looked out and did light of sight, and determined it was on the Forest Service in the Sodom Mountain Wilderness, and made the further determination that nobody needed to call JWTR despite the fact that JWTR had asked repeatedly for communication between landowners, between neighbors. By the next morning at 10 o'clock in the morning, that fire had blown up so that the JWTR forester now works for Green Diamond, he had to get out of there quickly because the paint was blistering on his truck. So we want to get in early, we want to be involved in this, and that's part of my reason for going, of course, to the Forest Service today, just to make sure that we open lines of communication at all levels and work together because otherwise we're going to have 30,000-acre fires instead of five-acre fires. We do have equipment, and our folks did operate some of that equipment later on in order to protect our land, otherwise it probably would have been somewhat bigger. But I was out on that landscape last Wednesday, and it's, there's some timber that's salvageable. There are quite a few little spots that are dead, but they're 15, 20 years old, they're about twice the height, or maybe one and a half times the height of this room. And we're going to leave those on the landscape. We're not required to replant that, which we do not harvest, but we're going to do it anyway because it's the right thing to do and it'll be economically the right thing to do later on. So we're going to have a lot of work to do, and we're going to have that probably finished up in terms of salvage by next April. I've got about 50 loads a week coming out of there right now. So fire, very important to us, communication very important to us, certainly just being out here on the landscape, being out here in communities, et cetera, very important to us as well. Let's see, missed anything here? Oh, I should mention that about 75% of our land borders on federal land, either U.S. Foresters or BLM. So we're going to need to be very engaged in those discussions and those issues. Several people have asked us if we've got a mountain pine beetle problem on our land. And the answer is because it's been pretty heavily harvested and very heavily thinned, we don't have a lot of problem. And so that's, that makes the case for active management in order to, in order to mitigate for disease like that. We'll continue to do that kind of operation in order to make sure that we are not infested with the mountain pine beetle. But it's very difficult with that kind of, with a neighbor who doesn't manage. And so we're going to be looking at those projects going forward as well.
And I believe on some of your lands, at least in Lake County and part of Clamath County, beetles come and go on, and it's been managed, it's been cleaned up since they went through, which is primarily lodgepole, obviously, but we actually, as this board was engaged with trying to get road use fees brought down or eliminated for not only JWTR but others to be able to get that product out of the forest.
Good, I appreciate that. Even though I wasn't here, I'd appreciate that.
We weren't successful, but I think that the relationship with the Forest Service and others today is much better. Yeah, it's above the local.
I have heard that, yeah, that's great.
So but we're very much this board, when you get to meet Commissioner Shown, he's the driving force, but pro-healthy forest.
I've heard that, too.
Pro-active management of the forest, doing the right thing, that affects all of it, from the clean water to the wildlife to the fire suppression. Part of it, we all, we know that by active management, the fires will be kept at a smaller size, say, the federal government dollars. Your neighbor is the federal government. We're 78% publicly owned in Lake County, primarily BLM and Forest Service. So your neighbor is the Forest Service. We stay engaged the best we can, but private industry needs to be right on top of them. If you need help, you call us. We know our congressmen and our senators well. One of my questions was going to be around the beetle, but you pretty much answered that. We're, I'm very much, I'm very active hunting fish and all those type of things. So one of my personal questions is, how do you feel about public use and what is, you lock up your lands, does the public get to use them? It's hard to police it out there. What is your expectations and how do you guys manage for, where you're in an area that's 78% publicly owned, and most people don't hardly see the difference in private and public?
Yeah. Our understanding is that the land has been open, that JWTR's land has been open in the past few years, and that, and then we expect to keep it open. That said, we've, you know, it's still fire season out there as far as we're concerned. But, you know, when we were out last Wednesday, I did see campers out there and seemed to be having a good time, so.
It's deer season here right now, so you're...
Yeah.
...there right now. So that's probably one of my main things is so that when people ask us, we'd be able to say, you know, respect the land, and they probably have a no-fire policy or whatever, things like that, whatever we have. But communicate with us, with our chamber, with the town.
We do have a website as well, and we'll keep information current on that website. So it's not quite current yet because we don't have recreation information on that yet. I have to get back to my office before I can update it, but yeah.
Back to the Forest Service road use fees.
Yeah.
Forest Service would say that that's to repair damage, that's called. That fee actually goes back to U.S. Treasury and doesn't really go back to the roads in place. So if you guys have some contacts or anything that can help leverage with us, working with a congressional delegation, whoever, keep us abreast because that's a topic that really hurts the private landlords.
I have heard that once before, so now that I've heard it twice, it's starting to sink in. Yeah.
Well, the value, the stumpage value of, say, lodgepole is very, very low.
Yeah.
So the road use fees diminishes it. Now then, on the very, very positive side, we do believe that Red Rock Biomass, Biofuels is going to build. We're still in some negotiations with them at this point. They have received their, they're okay for another $70 million out of the Department of Defense GSDA grant. They'll use 140,000 bone-dry tons of biomass a year, which is a great opportunity to build it for the mechanical cleaning up of the forest and that type of thing. It can be a real benefit, especially if you have areas, I don't know that you guys will have as much that's overgrown and not been managed correctly as the national forests.
Well, it does tend to fill in at overtime.
I'm trying to be politically correct. Anyways, I see it as an opportunity for private and federal. So even if it might impact your Clamath County site, I would, depending on the trucking cost to be able to get it to the plant, the plant will be right here in the Lakeview.
Yeah. So how many employees will that mean?
It will be 25 at the site, and with the employees associated with it, that would be a total of between 104 and 120 roughly. That's including the 25 at the site. During construction time, with two years of construction time, could be upwards of 200 to 400 employees, temporary employees. So for the, for health of our forest, I believe it'd be very, very good, private and federal.
Good.
You have a lot of small, harsher scatter here and there. Is it your guys, is there to consolidate with...
Well, one of the projects that Andy Elsby, our General Manager, but will be working on, is at least making a run at blocking up some of the checkerboard ownership. And I know we've tried and tried to do that in Washington without a great deal of success. There's no harm in trying.
Yeah, that would take congressional decisions to do that.
Ever done that in the federal?
We were able to do it in a small fashion here several years ago with our ski hill, trading of some county-owned lands and acquired federally-owned lands. We made a trade, so Forest Service is more of a challenge than BLM, I believe, on that. But if you don't work on it, you don't have a chance at all.
Generally won't get it done, yeah.
But Forest Service has a long history of doing land swamp. I came off, I worked 24 years on a land up in Oak Ridge, and we had big blocks of open timberland consolidated in years past. Forest Service has the same interest because it facilitates their management. It's just a paperwork, takes time.
We'd done an agreement with JWTR several years ago on the Lake Clamath line. I think it was for a destination resort type, where you, you were, you guys just come on, hadn't you? I don't know what their, what it really was, but I think I'm saying that right, but there was a land use change that we...
Land use change, you might probably remember planner.
That's about eight years ago.
Yeah, it was in '07 or '08. But it was mostly to give the option for resort type. And there was a biggest problem between the Clamath County and the Lake County land use plans is that there was a difference along that buffer. I think one of the counties said, well, we can't guarantee what's going to happen across the road, so they put a buffer there against it. And what we did was help alleviate that buffer so that if JWTR wanted to set up a resort area right at point A that happened to be on the county line, it made it more feasible. But they, I don't think they had any plan, blueprint plan ready to go. They were just...
Getting the land used.
Getting the land used in place for...
So basically, it just creates consistency between the two counties?
Yeah. And enlarged it because we don't have anything over on this end addressing that unlike Clamath.
Okay.
So will you have, I wouldn't assume that you have any employees in Lake County that be working out of here?
Sure. Our offices are in Clamath County, actually in Clamath Falls, in the old warehouse building there. So I visited, and I think there are about 17 people who actually spend time in the office, and I think it was built for about 185. So I suggested a bowling alley, but at any rate, we do have 65 employees, picked up most all of the JWTR folks. We do have, as I mentioned, company logging crews. And Andy has repeatedly mentioned just the caliber, high caliber of employees, and really exciting to work with these folks who really, some of them, the logging manager, who is her timberlands manager, has been on this tree farm for 38 years. He has four different hard hats, one representing each company.
And you guys have recently or in the process of that virgin sale for sawmills, so you have big timber production?
Susan is looking at the value of all of their sawmills. They have two... They have two operating sawmills in the south and...
In the south, U.S.?
Southern U.S., yeah. And they have one, two, three, four in Washington State. And so no determination yet whether they will sell, but they are looking at the value of them. This is a well-known complication, I guess, when I described the company. Our company actually has, Green Diamond, back in 2002, Simpson split with Green Diamond and the idea was not going after some kind of real estate investment trust type of status because, again, we're still privately held and we are an S corp. But really to create a better dynamic in terms of buying logs and selling logs at both ends and make both our timberlands and our sawmills more competitive. And I think it's really been a great, a very positive experiment in Washington State. In California, because there were very few options, Green Diamond then subsequently purchased the mill back from Simpson. And so we actually recently announced that we are intending to sell that one as well, so.
Just a curiosity note for myself, wait a minute, I'm from the south. Do you own a La Bla Lee, a Longview Pine or Hollywood?
We don't have any timberlands in the south and the purchase of those mills in the south happened after we split the company. So I know probably less than you do about it. What I read about Simpson, I read in the paper.
I'm really interested in your conservation side of it and to be looking with a vision, looking forward to protect and from not only the animals or whatever that have threatened or going to be listed or whatever, but just to do the right thing with the land.
Appreciate it.
And I really appreciate that because radicals both sides, whenever you come to the middle, there's the right thing to do. And it sounds like, from hearing you the first time, that your company is one that's one to do the right thing. It's not about one species, it's about all species. And you do have this one high on your priority, where you're going to take care of the habitat and everything for the land.
Yes.
And that's why we should manage all of our lands, especially federal lands.
Appreciate that. And I think it's really important to consider the people in the landscape as well.
We really promote public relations. Be as visual as you can in Lake County whenever you get a chance. We'd really like to hear from you, you know? If we can get updates occasionally, it'd be great. Get to know our communities.
Yeah, and I think once we know a little bit more about what we're doing... That didn't sound too good, did it? Once we know a little bit more about the sustainability plan and so, we'll be able to come back and give you an update. Might help sort of frame where we are now and where we're going.
Well, I believe, I believe these lands that you have, at one time was abused pretty bad and I believe that there's been some very positive things that have happened over the years and it sounds like they will continue to go on.
Absolutely.
It's good to hear whenever private business isn't looking at just taking everything on the ground. They're looking at making it sustainable and making it with a vision. Eighteen ninety, you plan on being around for a few years.
Yeah, at least another 125.
Curiosity about this little brown JWTR non-invested?
Oh, non-inventory.
Non-inventory.
Yeah, and I don't know the details, but there's some of it that was... It was not yet really ready to inventory, is the way I understand it, so, yeah.
And most of what you have in Lake County would be probably early regeneration stands. We do have some down around the Civil Lake. That's probably a commercial thing now.
Okay, we'll be there then.
I believe that some of your properties will have some private ownership around them. Up in the Dairy Creek area, above Dairy Creek, I call it all Dairy Creek, it's up higher than... I think that there's some other private ownership up in there that are neighbors.
Okay.
I believe that they use them.
Lots of private properties up there.
So small?
Small, very, much smaller than what you guys heard, a 10 acre. Well, a 10 acre...
Not very small.
A 10 acre property owner can either be a great partner or a bad partner.
Gotcha, okay. Good to know. And we'll appreciate any kind of intelligence you have about some of our neighbors. You know, that was part of the reason for going to the Oregon Forest Industries Council meeting earlier this week is for Andy to get to know some of these folks, but those are the larger timberland owners as well.
Well, now for my million-dollar question.
Uh-oh.
We're very pro-cattle in Lake County. Do you guys use your lands? Do you graze them?
Yes, yes.
Do you get permits out there for people to graze?
We do and all of those permits have been renewed and carried forward.
Excellent. I knew I was going to like it.
And that's another thing we don't have in Washington. So it's very fascinating. The evergreen huckleberry and the salal and the this and the that and the other thing is so tall and in our neck of the woods that self-respecting cow would never...
This is part of our culture and heritage here. I'm very pleased to hear.
That's what I find me fascinating about this is that it is a really different culture and different issues and neighbors have different interests, which is great, really fun. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You've got my number now, right?
I found your website even better, yeah.
Uh-oh.
You're trouble now.
It's harder than I ever...
Never do know. She might put a link onto our website, so.
I only have two cards left and I need one for the Forest Service.
Okay.
You can share. And you know where to find me, great.
You have our contact, too, right?
Absolutely. I have my cheat sheet here that's all going into my computer next week.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
That's our last thing on our agenda, so we will adjourn at 2:36.